This April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby a call to order. I'd ask for Reverend Sonny Wilks to provide our invocation, and please remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Let us pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege, the power, and the purpose of prayer. Make your ear attentive to our prayers this afternoon. Bless this meeting, Lord, make it fruitful and productive. Bless our city officials, the mayor, the council. Bless them, Lord, and all of their families, the policemen, the law enforcement, firemen, our military, bless them, Lord. Do them good. Emergency technicians, bless them and their families. Watch over them with safety. Bless our pastors and families in every church to the glory of God the Father. We praise you, Lord, today, and give you praise, glory, and honor for being so mighty good to us and so generous. Bless us, Lord, now, and keep your hand upon us. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that invocation, Pastor Wilks. Always glad to have you here with us. We'll now begin with the first item on our agenda, which is the approval of the March twenty-first city council meeting minutes and the March twenty-eighth special call meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Smith, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is approval of bills over fifteen thousand dollars. Mr. Powell.
The council has a copy of all the bills from last council meeting in their packet.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones, a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three on the agenda, which is approval of purchases over fifteen thousand dollars. Mr. Powell.
We have one purchase for council's consideration tonight for public works departments, a two thousand and twenty-four F-550 dump truck. This would replace a nineteen ninety-seven Ford F-700 dump truck that we have that needs to, that's worn out and it's actually not being used. It's been sitting for quite some time now. The truck is used for hauling materials needed for pothole repairs, street and sidewalk repairs, and maintenance and planting, and removal of trees, and signs, et cetera. We've attempted to bid this a number of times. This bid that we've got, we're recommending tonight, is over budget, but there are savings within the general supplies budget of the department that will cover the overage. The recommendation is to purchase from Beck Auto Sales for seventy-one thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this purchase?
There's an anticipated delivery date of nine months from the date of order.
Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is a presentation by Glenda Berry, who is the executive director of the Dublin Downtown Development Authority. Ms. Berry, thank you for being here with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Well, it's been a year, and a lot has happened. We've had thirteen new businesses that have opened in downtown Dublin with eighty-two new jobs and two-point-three million in private investment. If we move on, we've had old favorite events have returned. There you see everybody, these are all our slides of our businesses. We've had the crawfish festival returned, we had the shamrock drop. You just kind of go with me here. We also had some new traditions where we had our farm-to-table dinner, and we had our chili cook-off and fall festival. Our farmer's market turned as to, and remains one of the best gathering places that we have in our community. We had over ten thousand visitors last season, and I'm happy to say that we had fifty-one new vendors that were at the farmer's market in two thousand and twenty-three. Moving on, railroad park. Our railroad parks went through restoration. You can see the before and after here. All I can say is it too amazing. Our Stubbs easement project, from going from what was truly maybe one of the ugliest alleys in the entire United States, we were able to transition with decking and brickwork where it now actually is attractive and it's become really a wonderful passageway for people who work in downtown. We also, in Downtown Development Authority, were able to continue facade grants. This is an example of one that was awarded to Miller Soul Food. They upgraded their front and their back of their building. It's, here's another thing that we dared to say, that four-letter word, park, as in parking. We took, while not a permanent solution, it was the first step where we designated twenty spots in the lot behind Dino's and Saltwater to have two-hour parking. Again, not permanent, but it certainly is an important first step towards a parking solution. We also introduced in the arts, we had murals, we have leprechaun doors, and we had Dublin Community Theater. Dublin Community Theater entertained two thousand three hundred and forty-two individuals when they came to the theater, and they spent an average of seventy-one dollars when they were visiting in downtown Dublin. We're excited this year that we'll have the music man, and we anticipate those numbers will continue to grow. The DDA really had lots of little, little wins. We're going to leave it there for a minute. We purchased new trash cans at the market, we added new lights at the community garden, we carefully replaced the entry railing to the historic Carnegie, I've lost my last picture, and we installed, installed a new security system and cameras at the theater. When I think about my first year in this role, this picture is sort of a great visual. Sometimes you can feel like you're upside down, but thankfully, you're always able to get yourself back up and turned around and moving forward in the most positive way. So, moving into our fiscal twenty-five budget, we have a slight deficit of nine thousand dollars. Our focus is really on back to the market on Madison. With all the great work that's being done on Madison Street, we're looking at the market itself, and we are really hoping to do everything we can to make some needed improvements. So, in addition to the hundred and twenty thousand that's generously allocated to the DDA by the city, we are requesting another fifty-two-five for a total investment of one-seventy-two-five. These funds would be used to repair the concrete and the wood damage, purchase new ceiling fans, and re-spray the parking lot. The DDA is separately working to repaint the market roof. We believe all of those improvements will just help us continue to promote the market on Madison as a place for concerts, for the farmer's market, and some, a place in town that people can really, really enjoy and be proud to use. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to present to the mayor, our city manager, the members of our council, and I also really want to thank our Visit Dublin representative, Miriam Lewis, for all her tremendous work that she's done promoting all the things we've had going on in downtown Dublin. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be delighted to answer any questions if you have any. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your presentation question. I had a couple of people to ask me about an awning of some type, because in the morning, the shade is fine on the front side when they're vending, but as the sun comes up closer to the noon, it's really hot on that side. Have you all considered any type of shading or awning to go in the front part of the market?
You're talking about the stage side of the market?
Yes.
We definitely are trying to figure out what that could look like. I think the ceiling fans would be one thing that would help just circulate the air. It does get almost stifling during the summertime, June, July, August, and on, so I think that that's another valid concern that we really need to explore.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you for your presentation. All right. We'll now move to item number five on the agenda, which is the presentation by Miriam Lewis, who is the director of the Dublin Lawrence Tourism Council. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for having me this evening. To tell you a little bit, it's been another busy year, but I want to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we worked on. As you know, Visit Dublin, we are a nonprofit organization funded by hotel tax. We're tasked with advertising and promotion of Dublin and Lawrence County. We pay to advertise Lawrence County and its small locally-owned businesses in print, digital, social media, and television at no cost to the businesses. Our most recent two thousand and twenty-two numbers that are given to us by our partners at Explore Georgia showed that our traveling tax dollars saved each household in Lawrence County four hundred and forty dollars in taxes from their expenditures. And so, these are visitors that are staying here, playing here, traveling through, stopping at gas stations. And so, the visitor center is the hub of our activities, and we're the face-to-face contact for travelers passing on I-16. We're open six days a week, Monday through Saturday. In the past year, we've interacted with over ten thousand visitors and two thousand pets, because we're completely pet-friendly, family-friendly, just an oasis on the road. We also operate a gift shop in our lobby promoting local boutique items that are on consignment or locally crafted items and recently updated Visit Dublin merchandise. Each of our guests leaves with information about Dublin. We answer advertising leads, which are requests for information that come from our ads. We also have started newsletter sign-ups from our guests in our visitor center. This year, we fulfilled fifteen thousand brochure requests, which is double of last year. From our visitor center offices, we pay for and design and maintain nine websites, including our state tourism website. In December, we launched our redesigned tourism website, and we're very proud of it, visitdublinga.org. And since the launch in December, we've had fifty-four thousand new visitors to the website. And so, we write blogs several times a month highlighting tourism events and festivals and destinations. We also maintain six geocaches in destinations around the city to pull people off of the road to those locations. We've represented Dublin and Lawrence County at the Governor's Tourism Conference, the GACVB Annual Conference, and we serve on the GACVB Membership Board, and spoke during tourism sessions at GACVB about our local TPD grant. And our local TPD grant continues. We're, we just closed our second cycle of two thousand and twenty-four, and so we'll be opening the next cycle August second. So, if you know anyone that has any tourism-related product that they would like funded, please let them know to keep an eye on our website when that grant reopens. Our hotel tax continues to grow. Just since last year this time, we've seen a ten percent increase. GSSA Conference stays with us three times a year. On weekends, they've extended their contracts through two thousand and twenty-six with OFTC and our local hotels. Also, the tandem bike rally is coming to town with a hundred and sixty attendees, May twenty-third to twenty-six, and we're very excited about helping them during their stay in Dublin. Our marketing has included print this year, full-page ads in Georgia Magazine, Atlanta Magazine, Saber G.A., Southbound, Food and Travel, GoodGrit, and more. And along with the paid advertising, Dublin, Visit Dublin establishes relationships with publishers and writers and ad execs. So, we've targeted through social media efforts, paid ads, on our six social media accounts with over twenty-eight thousand followers. And this year, we've stepped into digital marketing, which is a new era for us. It helps us really be able to extend our reach and target directly our potential visitors of an age range or demographic that we specifically see already traveling, the traffic on our website. So, we're directing our ads to visitors traveling along the interchanges on I-16 and specific cities that we see that most of our traffic come to on our website. Since the rebrand and launch of our website, we've been also capturing Dublin. We've been arranging photo shoots and video shoots to go along with updated look of our advertising on our website and our digital marketing. We have several videos that I hope you'll look at our YouTube channel that we've been capturing over the last year, six months to a year. We also have partnered with the Recreation Authority on commercials, television commercials. Also, Riverview Golf Course will be something that you'll see coming out this spring. And of course, this past fall, Dublin was highlighted on the SEC Network, and it was one of the true South's most-watched and requested episode, and it, I feel, really showcased the good-heartedness of Dublin's people. At the end, I want to leave you with some visitor feedback from a couple of weeks ago. We keep a close eye on our social media accounts, and this was some feedback that came through our social media account. "We love the friendliness, the spirit, and the prices of all the shops were so reasonable. The food prices are reasonable for the quality. We're from Chicago, so the pricing of everything was a shocking surprise, and we will consider your town again when visiting Georgia for sure." And I would like to play one of our most recent videos, our spring tourism video. This is the first time it's been seen, so you guys get to watch it. It's a quick video. I'll be happy to take any questions.
I have one.
Yes.
The, um, the grant that you give out every year?
Yes.
Um, I guess my question would be, what makes a good grant? Because I see, I see from the last three, four years that one organization get half of the grant upfront, and then the other, then you only got half to give out to any other organizations. So, I'm trying to figure out what makes that, they get half of the grant when they apply every year. So, what's make a good grant where you can get?
Yes.
Is there more money besides that fifteen thousand?
It definitely depends, and so the fifteen thousand is the, the full-year cycle, and it's released in two cycles. So, it's not a specific set amount for, it just depends on what the grant is, how it's written, it's what it's, what's requested. There's a, really a lot that goes into it on the scoring of the grant, whether they're allotted the full amount requested, or whether it's more, or whether it's less.
Okay, and I guess also, how would an organization, if they're doing events, get y'all to come to, to the events so they can get showcased on their events?
To come to the events? We try to go to as many events as we can. We might not hit all of them, but we do try to get to as many events as we can. And this year, especially send a professional photographer. In previous years, we've been the photographer. We've gone out with our iPhones, but this year, we've had a photographer that we've set up shot list to send out to events.
Because I guess I'm worried about, I'm looking at the video, there's no diversity. I don't see nothing from the MLK parade, the Juneteenth at festivities, none of that. We just got?
Yeah, this is just one video. This is just the one we don't have on YouTube yet, but I definitely would encourage you, and it was the thirty-second video. We have several others that are longer, and it's still, it won't take up a lot of time. But we do, we do try to include a lot of diversity in our, in any of our photography or on our videos, so I definitely, I wish I could show all of them, because we have several great new videos. But they're all, they're all live on our YouTube channel.
No problem. Go look at it.
Definitely. You can give it a thumbs up if you'd like to.
No problem.
All right. Any other questions? Any questions? All right. Thank you, Miriam, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. Our final presentation this evening is from Ryan Waldrop, who is president of the Dublin Lawrence County Development Authority. Mr. Waldrop, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the, always appreciate the opportunity to get to come and stand before you and the council and talk a little bit about some of our activities at the Dublin Lawrence County Development Authority, what we've been working on for the past year, and a glimpse into a few of the things that we've got for the upcoming year that we'll be working on. So, first and foremost, certainly like to recognize the, the leadership of the Development Authority, our board of directors, because it's without their vision, their leadership, and our great partnership with you guys, we wouldn't be able to do all the great work that we do to attract new jobs, new investment to our community while working with our existing industries that are so vital to our community to help them grow and expand. So, just a few of the successful projects from this past year that we've worked on. One was Georgia Metals. They've, they've opened their brand-new twelve-thousand-square-foot facility, the Entrepreneur and Small Business Park. This is the very first tenant in that industrial site, so we're excited about that. And that represents an investment of more than a million dollars just in that one, one site alone, or that one business alone. Our two new South Korean companies that have located in Dublin in the last year, we're very excited about this. Ori America, their new facility on Kellam Road, their renovations are nearly complete. They've got some equipment that's been installed, and they're right now sitting at about twenty of the hundred and thirty employees that they have projected for that facility. As more of their customers come online, their employee count will continue to, to increase. But right now, there, there are a great twenty employees, so we're looking for some continued, for some great growth out of Ori and the great work and products that they make. And then, of course, thank you, everybody that came out for the groundbreaking for Washington Georgia Corporation. This is our second South Korean company that's located here in Dublin, and our second of the Hyundai suppliers. Leadership from the company, wow, they were just blown away with the hospitality they saw here in Dublin. We had some, some of the leadership from the company from, from South Korea here for that afternoon or for that day, and really were blown away with everything they saw in Dublin on, on that Friday afternoon. So, they were very pleased. We're expecting some land disturbance permit. Notes coming back from the state of Georgia very soon. Hopefully be able to get that permit issued very quickly, and you'll start seeing some dirt move out at the two-fifty-seven site for the very first tenant there. But again, that represents four hundred and sixty brand-new manufacturing jobs and an investment of more than a hundred and seventy million dollars here in Dublin and Lawrence County. So, we're really excited about that growth, and those are just probably the first of the, the South Korean-type companies that we're seeing coming to Dublin. We're just getting more and more calls every day, especially for the two-fifty-seven site, and some more sites that we have available as well. Existing industry, Denex Emissions, they're continuing to work on an expansion that would allow them to create or produce more of the products that they use in their product here in Dublin, adding more automation, adding more robotics, adding more technology. So, that'll represent another investment of about five million dollars into our community. So, really, really excited about that. And then, the former New Holland Building, that property has been sold to a company based in California called FH Packaging, and they distribute containers, like plastic bottles, glass bottles, glass containers to customers across the United States. So, this will help beat the market demand for their eastern U.S. customers. So, we've also been very successful in selling some property here lately as well. We have a fifty-acre tract that was on Val Ambrosia Road that we were able to sell to, again, a South Korean company that has existing businesses in the state of Georgia. They're going to consolidate their distribution activities into Dublin. So, we're going to expect to see some great movement coming out of that site, hopefully very soon as those leases that they have across the state start to expire. But we look forward to some good growth and some great distribution activity and logistics activity, again, closer to I-16, begin to happen. And then, we also, back in February, we were able to close on twenty-nine acres of property on Willie Paul Parkway to Georgia's, or to Nature's Medicines. We've requested a, me call with the company, we've actually got one scheduled for next week to be able to talk about really what their jobs and investment will be. This is a project that's been going on for a number of years now. So, as time has changed, as certainly market conditions have changed, interested to see what their job numbers and investment numbers are going to continue to look like. So, a lot of good activity going there. We have three existing buildings right now in the community that we're marketing, working with private developers to market, because they, we do not own buildings, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but we do have some existing buildings here in the community, the former Rockwell Building, the Flex Steel Building, and also the Lovett and Tharp Building. All three of those are available. Those are our three buildings that are more than fifty thousand square feet in size, so a lot of good marketing potential from that standpoint, utilizing existing infrastructure that's available and proper zoning. But we've also been able to show those buildings to prospects within the last thirty days each of those buildings. So, hopefully, we'll see some great work from that. Again, we're continuing to see a lot of activity on the Highway two-fifty-seven rail surf site, given the lack of available shovel-ready property, not only in middle and south Georgia. This certainly remains as one of the top sites for industrial growth within the state of Georgia. So, we're really pleased about that, pleased with the support, and excited about the support that we've been able to receive from our community as we've developed that, and certainly hope to see more and more businesses locate there. As far as some things coming up over the next year that we're working on, one is we're working on business retention and expansion surveys. I know it doesn't sound very glamorous, but it's really important to help us understand the pulse of what's going on in our existing industries across the community, but we're also using this as an opportunity to update some of the wage information that was developed by the University of Georgia some back in two thousand and twenty-one to get better wage information of what's available right now in, in our community. So, a lot of good, good work is going on with that. We're also working to promote new pathways like mechatronics, not only throughout Lawrence County schools, our school systems that we have here in Lawrence County, but even through regional activities through the, the communities that surround Dublin, that surround Lawrence County, because we know we have a lot of people that drive into Dublin every day to come to work. Let's make sure that those school systems are helping to educate the, the workforce that we're going to be depending on to come into Dublin every day for, for years and years. So, as always, our work plan is very ambitious. We've got a lot of things that we're working on, a lot of different irons in the fire, so to speak, and to accomplish this, we are right now just requesting to maintain the current level of funding from the Dublin City Council. You guys are certainly very generous to, to, to the Development Authority and to our work that we do, and so, so supportive of that. And again, we just want to, want to try to maintain the, or to maintain the current level of funding. Again, we appreciate the support of the mayor, we appreciate the support of the, the council and all the staff from the city of Dublin, from engineering, planning, city manager's office, and everyone else that we, we received support from during the course of the year. So, appreciate all of that, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that, that you may have or entertain any questions at this time.
What is that funding number? I don't remember.
Hundred and eleven thousand.
Hundred and eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Anybody? All right. Well, thank you for coming this.
Excuse me. Are we, um, tracking the jobs as they come in? How many are hired straight through and going through temp services?
Yes, sir. That is something we've been very, very cognizant of, most of the companies we've been talking to, and even as we've been going out doing our business retention surveys over the last couple of weeks, almost everyone we're talking to is saying that they're relying less and less and less on temp service jobs, temp, or, you know, temporary jobs versus direct hires and, and full-time employees. So, we're seeing even a, a decrease in that with our existing industries, but we're also keeping a close eye on those, especially those that we have incentives for, to understand what their, their temporary needs are going to be through staffing agencies, and making sure we understand what that ratio is between that and full-time jobs.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item number seven on our agenda, which is discussion and action regarding our ethics principles. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution twenty-four-twelve, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to reaffirm the ethics principles, and those principles are to serve others, not ourselves, use resources with efficiency and economy, treat all people fairly, use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents, and create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. This is through the Georgia Municipal Association. The city of Dublin is a certified city of ethics, and to maintain that status, the council is required to reaffirm this periodically, and that's what this resolution will do.
Any, any dispute from council members regarding being a city of ethics?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And, all right. Any opposed? And that passes. All right. Let's move to item number eight, discussion and action on a resolution for police vehicle purchase. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution twenty-four-thirteen, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to approve the purchase of a vehicle for the city of Dublin Police Department to provide authority for approvals of expenditures for the vehicle, provide for an effective date and other lawful service, purposes. The purpose of this is to authorize staff to, to purchase directly from the dealer a vehicle to be used for the police department. It will be an undercover vehicle.
All right. Any questions regarding this? We discussed it in pre-council, but do any council members have questions for staff at this time?
This will be processed with the twenty-four, from the twenty-four budget, or?
Yes, sir. In the current fiscal year's budget, there's money within the police department budget to cover it.
It was money that was allocated for other things that where it wasn't used?
It's, it's savings that we've experienced through vacancies and such.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Let's move to item number nine on the agenda, which is a resolution to provide local government support to Wings' grant application. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution twenty-four-fourteen, a resolution by and through the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia, to give local government approval of an application by women in need of God's shelter, also known as Wings, to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the two thousand and twenty-four Emergency Solutions Grant Program to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Wings this year is applying for a seventy thousand dollar grant, and we have historically provided local government support, which is required for them to be able to apply for this, and so Wings provides a great service to our community, and so they asked the council to provide local government support for their application. This does not in any way obligate the city to any responsibility as far as the grant is concerned. DCA just is, requires that local governments be aware that this application is taking place and that we support it.
Okay. So, this is for support of Wings' grant application. No city dollars on this, this is just to support their application. Do we have a motion?
What's to approve?
Second.
for this. And so Wings provides a great service to our community, and so they asked the council to provide local government support for their application. This does not in any way obligate the city to any responsibility as far as the grant is concerned. DCA just is, requires that local governments be aware that this application is taking place and that we support it.
Okay, so this is for support of Wings grant application. No city dollars on this. This is just to support their application. Do we have a motion?
Most to approve.
Second.
We have a, oh, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. We'll now move to item number 10 on the agenda, which is discussion regarding additional travel for Councilmember Jones. I'll just do this. Councilmember Jones is going to be attending the Housing Authority's annual strategic planning session in Savannah, Georgia. He is our city's liaison to the Housing Authority. This will have an estimated cost of $4 million. So if council would like to approve this funding, we can have a motion.
Most to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Smith. We have a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number 11 on the agenda, which is discussion and action on an agreement with Thomason Hutton Engineering for Industrial Boulevard Project. Mr. Powell.
In your materials is a proposal from Thomason Hutton, our engineering firm, to provide for preliminary engineering services through a traffic count and study, as well as a detailed traffic report that they'll produce for the Industrial Boulevard Improvement and Widening Project. This is a TIA or TESBLOST-funded project, and the TIA office has authorized us to move forward with the preliminary engineering. It is in band two of the TIA projects. The first band, you'll remember, includes the Claxton Dairy Roundabout. And so that will actually come up first, but they're ready to go ahead and start preliminary engineering on the Industrial Boulevard project. And so the total cost of this is $50,800. We recommend you approve this work. The proposal's in your materials, and it will be reimbursed through the TESBLOST funds that we receive.
All right. So we have to spend the money first, and then we'll get a reimbursement back from TESBLOST. Do we have any other questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number 12 on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a declaration of surplus. Mr. Powell.
Council has in their packet the list of items that are no longer of use to the city, and we've got some great deals that will be out there on GovDeals soon, for those that are interested. Just need a few little tweaks, and they'll be good to go.
That's not a warranty.
Yes.
All right.
Sold as is.
So do we have a motion regarding the surplus?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs to, to declare these items as surplus. We have a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That brings us to the end of our agenda items this evening, and it is now time for citizens' comments. If you would like to make a comment this evening, now is your opportunity. All right. We have no citizens' comments this evening.
Not one.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Carla Wright Johnson. I have some news to tell you guys. My biological mother is from Montrose, Georgia. Her name is Rita Mae Underwood-Hawkins. And I just found that, well, I found it out a while ago. And I just wanted to bring it to you, because some of us, we're family. We're family, family. But anyway, I have some ideas about that land across from Dudley Memorial, no, no, Dublin Memorial. You know, since we have the four-year college now, Middle Georgia State University, and I'm a alum now, we can build dorms over there. Y'all thought about that? I mean, it's just a thought that I had. You know, the land is cleared off and it's ready. We can get federal funding and state funding, you know, and we can get buses to bus the children, well, the students to the Kellam Road location. And if they need to go to the Cochrane location, they can go there too, if we get buses to bus them. And that was just an idea, you know, that I had in my, in my head, you know.
Well, thank you for-
But thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to-
Mayor and the team.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Always appreciate citizens' comments and ideas. Do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment or suggestion this evening? Okay. If not, it'll, we'll now move to council comments. We don't have any executive session or anything like that. Okay, so we'll just have council comments now. We'll start with our city treasurer, Blake Daniels. No comments. City attorney, Duke Grover.
No comment.
City clerk, Heather Browning.
No comment. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Brown.
I'm gonna say my voice, no comment.
Okay. I know you've been under the weather lately, so appreciate you being here, though. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mel. I thank everyone for coming out for your suggestions and, um, commenting. I'd like to thank staff for all the hard work that they do. And just coming Saturday, I know it's late, no, it's April 20th, at the Resource Center, we have a pop-up library from 10 to 2, 10, I'm sorry, 10 to 12, I am sorry. But you can mark your calendar for every Thursday, Saturday of the month. So next will be April 18th, we have a pop-up library, have the kids over there starting our kickoff summer for the summer reading and bringing the library to the community so they can check out books and get involved and, and read. So we would like show support from city council and mayor and council on April 18th. Yeah, April 18th. No, May 18th, I'm sorry. This is April. Excuse me, I get confused on my months. But May 18th next month, that would be a good time for the council to come out and show support and show what kids reading and help them out. So, but that's what we've got going on. Catherine Gray, I think we got a list of other things going on at the Resource Center. So we have a lot going on at the Resource Center. So come out, check out what's going on at the Resource Center. Let's get involved. And let's all collaborate and do a lot and make Dublin better and make Dublin better. Thank you.
All right. And I was just looking at the schedule, Councilman Jones, and it looks like the next pop-up library is going to be April the 20th.
Yeah, that's during-
From 10 to 12.
Yeah, we're doing that during Wednesday, so we don't get that much patience. We're doing them on Saturdays now to get more, because kids gonna be in school.
All right, that makes sense. All right. Thank you for that. And Councilman Godfrey, any comments?
Thank you, mayor.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you for your presentations. I just would like to ask for continuous prayers for the families that were affected during the Easter shooting, one being my cousin, Miore Ellington. So you see the yellow, I'm representing her right now. So I ask for prayers for that family, as well as the Calvin family, Sonya Mae Calvin and her family. She lost her husband. So I'm just asking for prayers over this city and our people that are living here and the youth. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you, everybody. And thank everyone for your presentations. They're very informative, and y'all have a great week.
Thank you. Councilman Smith.
I'll just echo everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you for the presentations. See, we all working together, trying to make Dublin one of the best cities across the state of Georgia. Also, Saturday, there's a memorial council walk at the high school track. If anyone would like to attend, from two of my classmates that passed the council. So that's a walk going on this Saturday. And that's it.
All right. Thank you for that.
Nine to, uh, 9 to 12.
I forgot one thing.
Sure.
Ask for prayers for Sarah Colby, our council member there in Osaka, Japan, and the kids that are with her and the families. So pray for them as they travel as well. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Powell, any comments this evening?
Looking.
All right. I want to thank everyone for coming. Great meeting, and maybe we'll see you next time. Thank-